We'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval, second.
Motion on second to approve today's agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We have some employee recognition this morning. Everybody's sitting all around the back. Okay, Diane Clark. Come on up, Diane. Diane's been recognized for only 35 years of service.
Wow.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Rhonda, you have some.
Yeah, we were all afraid of her. That's why we're over there. She survived 35 years, right? So Diane is my radar. Diane is our office support supervisor. So she supervises all of our office support staff throughout the agency, but she also is our office manager and she does a lot of stuff for me as well. So she is pulled in multiple directions every day. And so we so appreciate her years of service with our agency. Everybody knows Diane. And if there's a question, you go to Diane, right? And then she figures it out. So we just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Tim Dent, Technology Services. 30 years of service. Thank you very much, Tim. Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know if the board knows the story, but 28, 27 some years ago, Tim had come, Tim had left, Tim came back, and he was offered opportunity. His supervisor left and he came, then BJ Sefti came, Tim come administrator and asked if he was interested in the job. Tim kind of had to think on it for a while. And how fortunate are we that Tim made the decision to take that position and some three decades later, here he is. We're fortunate that he provides great leadership, proactive in his style of keeping us safe in our technology department and in community worshipable employees. And when you look to the state of Minnesota, our technology services and our GIS services are known to be reliable and so fortunate that Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Sarah Rosso, Social Services.
She's not here, but all accepted.
Sarah has 25 years of service.
Yeah. So Sarah is one of our social workers in our disability services unit. She manages care coordination under our special needs based care program, which is under a contract with New Care and Health Partners. She has been amazing. She was one of those staff that kind of started in child protection and licensing and then moved throughout the agency. So we're fortunate to have opportunities where our staff who really enjoy working for us can kind of move around. So we're excited for something to happen.
Thank you. That's amazing. Three employees, 90 years of service to the county. That's pretty impressive. Great employees. Okay, next item is citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard that are not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of minutes from the October 15th and 22nd, 2019 meetings.
Move to approve, second.
Motion on the second to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Approval of payment of bills and vouchers. Motion on the second to pay the bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Okay, request to fill vacancy for full-time corrections officer, Julie. Sheriff, good morning. Think you got a lot of paperwork with you.
Yeah, well, it can be a lot convincing. I think.
Good morning. Yes, I'm here to request, we have a vacancy, full-time officer. We had somebody didn't quite make it through our probationary period. We have quite a bit of vacation coming up, prior vacation that we need to honor. We have something going on, maternity leave here within the next two weeks, and I'm already down a person. I really need to fill this position so I can keep the vacation offered out, and I don't have the variable staff to cover it. Right now, we're running one pod down because we don't have enough staff. Unfortunately, our numbers are allowing us to do that, but if that goes, if our population increases, we're going to be in even a more dire situation as far as staffing. So I really need to get this filled as soon as possible. I am training somebody right now, so I could move somebody into it, but I'm here to request that.
So you do have a person ready to put into this pod?
They are about halfway through their training, so in about two weeks, I can roll somebody.
Okay. Because I'm sure, you know, we're trying to hold off on hiring any employees until, you know, the beginning of the year because of the changes in the benefits package and that sort of thing. So questions from the board?
Is it possible some retired officers could fill in between now and the first of the year?
No, we don't have anybody in that position.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
That was a good question. I wish I did. I'd hire them back as part of my voice, but I don't have anybody.
There's no temps you could hire or anything like that.
No, it's too complicated a job to hire temporarily. It's a month process just to train them in to be corrections officers.
So the person, you have a person ready to, are they, they're already employed or just?
Yep, they're already a variable hour.
Very, okay.
We also know that the board is trying to hold off, so we wouldn't come to you really unless we felt strongly that we need this person. And that's why we're here. Not only are the vacations and things like that, but there's going to be somebody going on paternity leave. And then we also have to make sure that we're maintaining our DOC requirements and numbers of the staffing there and things like that. So we obviously want to respect the wishes of the board to attempt to hold off hiring, but this is just one that we feel that we need to, that we feel we need to replace.
I just have to ask the question, if they're variable hour now, why couldn't they stay variable hour through the end of the year and still be doing what you want them to do?
Sure, as variable hour, they can pick and choose what shifts they want. If I could put them as a full-time employee, they're locked into a schedule and they know they have to work.
Even with the offer of a full-time job 60 days down the road?
Wouldn't make a difference. They could still, like holidays are coming up. They say, no, I'm a variable hour, I can't work those, that timeframe. They have the right to do that. When they're a full-time employee, you have a little more ability to control what their schedule is. We have all control actually of their schedules, so.
Well, what are some more wishes?
I just, excuse me, I think it kind of puts us in a hard spot because we know you're in a hard spot and you wouldn't come to us otherwise, but there are four big, you know, requests to fill vacancies on our agenda. And we were, I mean, we're quite clear that we are trying to hold off until the end of the year. You know, I think it would be interesting to see in terms of if you don't have enough staff for that pod and our numbers go up and you have to continue operating with that pod closed, what it will end us costing in the end, obviously, I think would be much more than the health benefits piece, you know, coming in January. But this is a tough one because we are so close to the end of the year, and I just am concerned if it becomes a waterfall of requests. And so I, this is a tough one for me.
I understand that, but just one last thing that you wouldn't mind. We are a 24-hour facility, which mandated positions, and it's not Monday through Friday, day shift, like maybe some of the other requests are. These are shifts that have to get filled one way or the other. So if we don't meet our minimum mandatories, then we have an obligation to do shipping out.
I think that is true with these jail positions, that it's different than some of the other department issues we've got. And we do have the DOC issues that we have to deal with, so. So I support your request as much as I hate to do that at this point, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve the request. Do we have second?
I'll second the request because I know this isn't something that, I know you thought about it and know the predicament that we're in, but it just isn't.
Yeah, I'll support too, but I need to reiterate here that, you know, in this last year, what we did going through this whole process of doing a wage study and coming up with a way to finance what we want to do for all of our employees moving forward in 2020, there had to be an offset for that. And part of that offset was our reconfiguration of our benefits, which thankfully all of our employees understood and agreed to. But, you know, so we're in the 11th hour now, and, you know, just to give you an example here, this could potentially be an additional $6,000 a year cost for as many years as that employee is here, between, difference between hiring today versus January 1st, you know? And that's the dilemma that we're under. Now, that's a $6,000 cost to us that offset even a bigger cost that, you know, when you start looking at all the employees and including this employee that you would hire is going to also get that benefit of the wage study increases. So, you know, and it disturbs me that we have so many of them coming up and when we're trying to do this and.
Okay, any other discussion? We have motion and a second. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We do appreciate, we know we're putting you in a huge burden in the situation, but we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to clarify, it's not a burden, it's.
Well, it's a tough decision to me.
It's a hard spot.
It is a hard spot.
You know, it's how we're trying to manage all of, you know, all of these compensation and benefits packages that it can be affordable for all the people paying the bills too, so it's.
Okay, next one. Bid opening for food service contract for correctional facility.
Looks like we got two bids in. We got one from Trinity Services Group and one from Summit Food. We'll open up the.
One of those are existing?
One is existing. The Summit is our current provider offsite.
Okay.
And these are both for food services to be handled onsite here at our new jail once it's complete. Let's see if we can find the bid page. Looks like the adults, the jail detox has a scale pricing and it's based on population. So population from 97 to 106 would be a base price of $1.48. And then if we were to do, like for today's population, we're looking probably at a 127 to 136, which would be $1.38. See what they have for detention.
Price goes up, no, down.
No, it went down.
What, wasn't the first one 127?
148.
Oh, I am sorry.
127.
Okay.
Yep. And then juvenile detention has a sliding scale as well, and that's just based on population. There's 50 to 54, it's $4.70 per meal. And then if you go up to, they go up to 100, it's $3.86. $3.88 per.
308.
308.
Per meal?
Per meal.
That's way high.
They do have the school lunch program, maybe that was like figured in there, but we'll go to the next.
But that's even, that's higher than I pay school lunch at Morehead.
This is the group that I know are not nearly paying that.
Currently, with the.
Yeah, well, this was Trinity, and they've, we've never had Trinity before, so.
It just is weird that there's such a discrepancy when there's on campus for the jail.
Yeah, I would assume they're, well, they might have a different menu for kids, I suppose.
There's probably a different menu, and keep in mind, there is transport costs for the other two facilities, but detox is a.
Walking across the sidewalk.
But still, I know what Morehead School is charging and that they're transporting.
Okay, so we're into Summits. Okay, Clay County, population of 121 to 130, it's $2.67. And detention is $2.78 a meal. And I must see where they have detox on here.
275 a meal.
Detox.
275.
Was detox on the Trinity one?
Yeah, that was included in the jail price.
What are we currently paying?
We're on sliding scale, so pretty similar to what Summit is currently proposing here.
What was the regular price for the jail?
Well, with our population right now, it could range from about $2.67 to about $2.42.
240?
242, $2.42. What I could do is I can burn copies of all the prices and send them all over to you so I can look at it.
Jenny? The second, were either of these agencies that are currently providing?
Well, I'm sorry.
Is one of these currently providing?
Yeah. Summit.
So my understanding from different reports is that our kitchen is delayed significantly?
That's correct.
So how does that play into if we accept bids now or if we need to delay acceptance? Is there a contingency in the RFP?
The contingency is that we can reject any bid for any reason.
Okay.
I know, but can, after we're in the bid, can we reject it? I mean, after six months, can we say, okay, we're done? How long is this?
We'd have a three. This is a three-year contract, so.
I guess my question mainly was, if we're not ready for that, how does that play into if we're accepting bids now? Have we talked about that?
Well, you know, I think, I think we have, under the current contract, we would look at an extension.
Correct.
Of the current contract to take us till the time the new kitchen is ready, at which time then this contract would take over, right? Because that's the plan, yeah.
Because it would be two different services, offsite versus onsite.
And I had a follow-up question on that. Are we able to approve part of their proposal, like with Highway, you can, if we were to approve one company for the jail, the other company for juvenile and/or detox, or does it have to be all encompassing?
It'd have to be one because there's only one kitchen available. You couldn't have two separate food vendors in your kitchen, there wouldn't be enough space to, right?
Well, you'd said something about transport, so I just didn't know.
Well, they got to go across the sidewalk to the building.
Minimal transport, yes, compared to what it is now.
So if I understand this correctly, these people are going to prepare the meals.
Yep.
We're not going to do anything, even when the kitchen is ready, they're still going to prepare the meals.
Mm-hmm. Yep, they just.
In our kitchen.
In our kitchen.
Okay, that's.
Can you give me the Trinity number? I have three of them.
Yeah. So for adult and detox, it's a sliding scale, and it can be anywhere from $1.48 a meal to $1.30 a meal. It's all based on population.
That's for adult and detox?
That's adult and detox, and then their detention scale runs from, anywhere from $4.70 to $3.8.
That's for the juvenile.
So where does the 308 come in at? What's the count?
100, or 99, 95 to 99.
Well, that's completely full.
Yep.
So there's 308.
But that's if it's.
As if it's full.
Oh, that's if it's.
If it's full, it's not full.
No.
Well, not, it's not yet.
Better not be.
Okay.
What's the count for the 478 then? What, or do they have that?
For, okay, so 50 to 54 is $4.70. That's the low range. That's a low number for a population.
For what's, what's the population?
50 to 54.
50 to 54.
Yeah, we're over that now, so.
55 to 59 is $4.38.
Here's the deal, you can buy a hot and ready pizza for $5. I mean, I'm not quite sure why it goes from $1.38 for the adult and detox population to more than $4 to just cross the street.
I agree.
Julie, what's the, what's the 59? Because they've already hit 62.
So between 60 and 64 is $4.12.
So do you want, you have the ability to look at these and then we'll approve it maybe in a week? Or what's your?
Yeah, I think we're, I need definitely time to go through them all, and I haven't done a reference check on this other company. I've never dealt with them before, and I think we need to come back, but.
Julie, I have a few more questions.
Sure.
So the, you know, in this whole process by, you know, we were under the understanding of why we have our own kitchen, we're going to be able to reduce our meal costs. So we're, we've got this brand-new kitchen in right now, and the numbers that are coming in is the, we're going to be paying as much now as if it's done offsite.
Except for, well, Trinity's meal prices for the jail are pretty, pretty low. That's kind of what I expected, but their prices for detention are extraordinarily high, whereas Summit is pretty much, pretty close to what we're paying right now offsite. So I am a little surprised by Summit's proposal.
Yeah, and so right now, they bring these meals out and then they have to pick things up and take them back and clean them? Or is there, you know, there's that kind of stuff too, whereas in this facility, we were probably planning on having some kitchen work being done by inmates?
Not, no, we weren't for having inmate labor this time around, just because of our population that we have right now and the fact that we're not accustomed to having a kitchen in our facility, and it's going to be a learning curve for us. So it was something we were going to hold off on, and we didn't want our food prepared by inmate labor.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting the food be prepared, but there's, there's things that be done afterwards.
Right, some trays and stuff, cleanup and stuff like that. We still need to have staff to supervise that, but yeah.
Well, can you work with these two companies and see what can be done here?
I think we need to talk to James too.
I think, Mr. Chair, just doing some quick calculations for the juvenile, the difference between if they were managed to stay in that 60 to 62 range, it would calculate to about $91,000 of additional cost for the juvenile center next year, so.
Yeah, they're.
Additional cost, based on what it is this year.
Yeah, that's a significant.
They're wiping out our, they're wiping out our revenue from the school lunch program that we get from the state.
What, sorry.
More than that.
What did you say the cost was per meal to have that delivered to the detox currently?
Two, isn't it? Right, this year?
Right.
It's like two, what is it, 278?
Depends on, for detox in the jail, the number right now is a sliding scale.
I guess I didn't mean, did I, I didn't mean detox, I meant juvenile.
Juvenile's 267.
I think so. Through this current company?
Yep.
So how is it additional revenue?
Well, the additional cost, if we would go to, if we would go from the $4.12 for Trinity.
Oh, right.
To what they're asking for, for Summit next year is $1.34 per meal.
I got you. But it would be interesting to see, using 2019, you know, the first six months or whatever of 2019 as an average, what this would average out to be. And then we know where, how much more, how much less.
Mr. Motors, Summit's, Summit's bid for detention is fairly close to what we're paying now.
Yeah.
Just like the jail is. The, you know, the problem is, is when you compare the low bid of Trinity at a buck 30 to buck 48 compared to 242 to 267 on potentially 150, 160, 170 adult meals a day. You know, when you calculate that out, you know, we're.
No, I get that, and I think the other problem that we're not, I mean, that you kind of alluded to is we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in a kitchen that we approved with the understanding that we are going to save a significant amount of dollars. And so if our cost per wear on that is way higher going into it, so we just.
We might as well save the kitchen space.
I mean, at this point.
There's no point in building a kitchen.
Use that for.
Well, that's probably a conversation we should add earlier.
Yeah. Well, maybe, Steve, we should get together with James and Julie and set something up soon and talk about this and see what alternative we can come up with.
I have one follow-up question and understatement. Could, is it possible from Morehead Public Schools to deliver food to the juvenile center?
It may. The only issue would be is they don't serve supper in weekends, so.
At a cost of 470 a meal, it might be worth double checking.
Well, that's per meal. So what is the, did we have like a 30-day period to yes or no on this, or what was our?
I think the time range was that we'd come back to the board with a recommendation next week, but I think we need to do it a little more.
Yeah, what does the contract, I mean, how good is their, usually their bids have to be good for a certain period of time.
Yeah, I thought it was 60 days.
Okay.
Okay, well, we need to do a little more work on this, it looks like.
So were there, just out of curiosity, were there other entities that you thought might bid that did not bid, or?
I had one other one who was planning to a tour and check things out, and they decided at the last minute not to.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, we did have five people that did come and grab a packet from our office, just the two that submitted.
Okay, well, we'll do a little more work. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk?
That's really just.
Yeah, that is tough. Request for approval to increase tipping service fees for solid waste. Good morning, Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Coming before today to talk trash, one of my favorite subjects, as you know. Essentially, what we have before you today is we're talking about service fees and tipping fees. Tipping fees are the fee that you pay to dump your trash when you go out to the landfill or transfer station. That's the number you pay to dump your trash. Service fee is basically the number that's on your property tax. That's a service fee is $42 on an annual basis for residential homes. The discussion, and I should thank Commissioner Whalen and Commissioner Campbell, I mean, especially Kevin, did a lot of work in putting this thing or helping us put this thing together. We worked with the solid waste advisory committee and also Shannon Thompson and Matt Evans from Burns and Mack and Steve as well. So we've worked on this for about three months and we put a lot of time and effort into it. During this discussion, it's really important to remember that the tipping fee primarily is funding operations, and that's goes to this particular handout that you were given in your packet. And you'll see, you know, essentially what the operating costs are and what they cover. The service fee basically covers capital cost, and those are the, you know, fixed costs, basically, the things, internal service fund, bonds for the new transfer station, all the other things that are necessary to run the landfill. So that's really, really important to remember. Again, the tipping fees are going towards operation and the service fee is going towards capital cost. What we are recommending and what the solid waste advisory committee has recommended is for this next year to increase the. is for this next year to increase the tipping fee from forty-five dollars a ton to fifty dollars a ton and to increase the service fee from five percent, basically, across the board. So, that's the recommendation and that's what I come to before you request permission to do. It's a pretty small amount that we're asking for. A family of four produces about a ton of garbage on an annual basis, so five dollars, the five dollars that we're requesting, divide that by twelve, it's a nominal amount that we're, we're asking for. What we're trying to do here is we're trying to make the, the solid waste fund solvent and help make sure that it's sustainable over the course of the, the entire operations. And what we've done here by doing this is, is that you can see by the chart in your packet, we're really, really close as far as the capital cost, but we're spot-on as far as the operational cost. So, I think we've made some progress in getting to where we need to be. So, at that, Mr. Chairman, I stand to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, questions for Kirk?
I got one, so if I'm reading this right, the residential service fee is, is forty-two dollars per year right now, and it's going to go to forty-four dollars?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, that's exactly what we're talking about, yes.
And it's been many years since.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's one thing I should mention, is, is that we haven't raised the, the service fee for probably twelve years, and the, the tipping fee has not increased substantially either, so it's something that really needed to be done.
Is this a separate line item on our tax statement, or is that all?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this, our, our budget is an enterprise fund and is completely separate from the, the overall county budget, it's a separate budget of itself. We run our enterprise fund, it's like a business, we run it like a business, and we have to, you know, make the money like a business, and we have to pay our expenses like a business, and it's completely independent of the, the county funding process.
It is a line item.
But it is a line item, yes.
It's a separate line item, is it?
It's just called special assessment.
It's called the service fee, I believe.
Because I see a forty-two dollar special assessment on my.
Yeah, that's what that is.
It just says special assessment.
Yeah, that, that'd be probably what it would be.
Kevin?
Yeah, I, just a little clarification here, this is something that I certainly was advocating to, to come up with a way to, because we have two different sources of revenue, it was important to be able to explain to our taxpayers why we have two different methods of funding solid waste. And the, so the forty-two dollars which is going to forty-four, you know, that, that you asked about, Mr. Haney, was, that's, that's what we put in place to handle all the capitalization costs. So, it's, it's for the landfill expansion, it's for, for the first time now, we've got, we had Kirk and, and his staff, they went together and determined all of the major items that we have, and we've created an internal service fund that's built into that, so that we're now going to have a, putting aside X amount of dollars per year for replacement like we do in, in every other part of the county. And, and so that's where that one million five hundred and fifty-five thousand in expenses shows up that transfers to the capital side on that page. Now, one thing to keep in mind that for the year 2020, of that one million five hundred and fifty-five thousand, there's roughly seven hundred thousand that is, that's set to go towards the principal and interest payment on the transfer station. Well, we know that that's, that bond isn't going to happen in, in 2020. However, the, you know, the landfill expansion of the two-point-five million, we're going to be writing a check out of our solid waste fund this year, and we need to then, so this is also then built in where that would be paid back, that two-point-five million would be paid back over a period of five years. So, that's built in, into this as well, and, and then, you know, if you keep this process going, you know, based on that four, just that forty-four dollars, five, you know, when the landfill needs its next expansion ten years from now, the funds will be there to do it. So, this establishes a, a good way to finance the capital costs with the, a fairly minor increase. So, that's, that's kind of the good news there. And on the landfill operation side, that, that covers, that covers, oh, administration and covers everything else, including household hazardous waste, all that stuff goes into the operation, so.
I think I remember us discussing increasing the tipping fee back when I was on the committee before I was elected to.
Yeah, and so if you look at, if you look on this and there, you know, we, after reviewing this, there was, we had some charts that showed us that, you know, if we didn't do anything in future years, we'd really fall below the line. Well, we've kind of determined that that might not be the case, but when, when Kirk says that we're, we're, we're spot-on in the operations, technically, according to this, we'd, we'd fall two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars short revenue-wise. But I think in our enterprise fund right now, for this first year, we can certainly cover that. If you see that down below there, it says four dollars and forty-two cents, that's, that's another, that's what the tipping fee would need to go up an additional amount to cover that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. But we don't, we're not recommending that be done right now, we think that, and I know that SWAC was very concerned about raising that tipping fee any higher than that five percent, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'd like to point out that we are going to be looking at this again next year. One of the things that, I mean, this is something that we should have been looking at years and years and years and years ago. And I think that, you know, as I said, Commissioner Campbell really has dug into this and really helped, you know, put together something that's pretty sustainable.
Okay, any other for, Frank?
Well, I've been, I've been opposed to all this, as I said, got a question, why is it a separate fund? You know, I realize that you're, but it's almost like we tell us, here's your property tax, but, oh, we're going to give you another one here, you know, I just.
That's, that's, that's the way the enterprise funds are set up at, at the county level. If you want to, if you want to, if you want to take it off of the tax statement, you would have to shift that one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into the operations piece, then that would increase everybody's monthly rate that they pay for garbage utilities. So, you know, the best way we can say to explain that, Frank, is that, that, you know, what you have on your property tax statement is covering capital costs, you know. It's kind of like, it's kind of like when we, when we build the jail or we build the law enforcement center, those things are capital costs, they're outside of the normal budget.
Someday I'll probably understand that, very good.
Any other questions for Kirk? Okay, do we, what do the board want to do on this?
I'll make a motion of support for the project, or for the tipping fee, service fee increase. I will second it.
And we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, no in favor of the motion, signature by the same aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Very good, thank you very much. Um, just on another note here, just as FYI, I'm meeting with PCA here shortly. They're up here to talk about our bonding request, so.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to do a little tour of those folks today.
I, you know, I'm going to be reporting in the committee reports too about another issue regarding solid waste that's come up and that has to do with recycling and increased costs that are being put down from Minn-Cota. Uh, and we've been doing some work with, we're going to be doing some work with the state legislature to try to get improved score funding, but I'll talk about that.
Okay, and one other thing related to that is.
What time are you doing, touring with the?
Um, nine o'clock.
How much?
Nine o'clock.
Oh.
Um, one other thing related to that, Commissioner Campbell, is, is that we met yesterday, staff people from eleven counties to talk about regional issues, and I'll report to you all about that at another time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, request for support of project for designation of township road, smart. Good morning.
Morning. Turn this on.
So, we, uh, we've come up with a project and we're here to ask for your support of it, if you think that's worthy. Uh, the question that we get asked often as county staff, it's us and GIS, recorders, highway, all of it, we get this question that is, is it or isn't it a township road? Um, we know where the state highways are and the federal highways and the county highways, but township roads are not clearly defined. So, what we have found, Kimberly located, there's an actual statute in, in Minnesota that talks about what township roads are, and there's a process that a township can go through to actually record the roads. So, what we would like to do is work with the township, starting with their township officers meeting here in a couple of weeks. And over the next year, working with them to go through the steps that they need to go through to actually record what roads are theirs. Um, there's quite a few things they have to do, and our plan is to support them as much as we can. Um, what they have to do, they have to have a map that shows what roads are there, they have to have a public hearing, they have to have mailings to their citizens, there's a bunch of steps they need to go through. And what we're planning on doing is putting together a packet for every township with all the information they need, and we'll help them through that process over the next several months in hopes that they'll go through the steps that they need to go through to actually record what roads are theirs, so that we can better understand what's going on. This has come to light not only because we get the question often, but if you remember, a few weeks ago I was here, we're talking about next generation nine-on-one, which uses our roads. Well, before I put that into the emergency response system, I want to make sure it's actually a road, so we're trying to just clear up some of these questions over time. And this on the screen is the actual statue that talks about what we're, what we're going through, and we're going to send, I think, a copy of this to the townships. And then the other thing I have here was, or if I can get my mouse to click. This is a, kind of a sample map that we'll be sending out to each township, and this is like, what we're going to send them first is a markup map, one that they can, you know, that they can write on. What we want to do is send them some information they can go through, yes, no, that we approve, all this stuff. And then once we get to the point that they are happy with that, we'll actually produce the recordable map document that they need for their public hearings, and then we'll get those done. Our hope is to have that first process done by spring, so that they're, can have their public hearings in the spring. That's, that's, I don't know, that's overly optimistic, but that'd be our hope. And then after the public hearings are done and they approve their maps, then they could actually get them recorded. Kimberly has offered to waive the recording fees, so the, the hope is we can make the process as simple as we can for the townships, so that they just, they just have to follow through the steps where there won't be any impact to them.
Are these township roads named already, are they?
Yes.
Okay.
So, besides the recording fees, do you anticipate any cost to the township to accomplish this, or?
To not, uh, well. Have some fees associated with holding the public hearing, publishing notices for the public hearing.
Right, and mailings.
And mailing.
Would be it. So, are there, um, are there certain requirements that the statute has that townships need to be aware of? Yes, and that's why I think the idea was that we would send it along with them.
I think that's important for townships to know, you know, what, what is, what is required of them versus what might be optional for them.
Yeah, at some point, yeah. Way toward the bottom here.
Do you have a copy of this for us at all?
I can give you a copy, but sure.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, this is, this is it, right here, yeah. Town roads, and it talks about what, what roads are, and then there's the actual section here talks about the actual steps they need to follow, and that's what we want, help them through this process. So, the end goal for us as a county is, then we'll actually know which township roads are, and we had a few that did it back in the eighties, but nobody's done it since, and what we'd like to do is set it up so we do this every ten years, kind of like the census.
Census.
Yeah, so every ten years, we go through the process with the townships and say, here, here's your new map, and you approve it.
Frank, you sending something out to the townships telling them that you're going to be talking about this November eighteenth?
I, I sent a message back to that, the, yeah, whoever it was that sent us the invite email, that we'd like to come and talk to them.
But the townships aren't aware that you're going to be talking about it?
Right, this will be our first time talking to them.
Well, at the last spring meeting, Dave and myself did bring it up that we were going to start looking at something, so.
I was just going to wonder, as far as our tenants, if the township meeting probably would be greater.
If they're all notified.
If they're all notified that you're going to be talking about this stuff, you know, it's, because I think this is important, so.
Well, I think you could email Gene Ward and just say, I, I let you know that we were wanting you to talk about this. Is it possible for you to give the township officials a heads up? We feel this is really important, that as many townships are represented.
Okay.
Sometimes the townships aren't there, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's, I'll do that.
And I think this is important that they are there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm hoping that the weather stays nice so that farmers can go out in the field, but a lot of people are still in the field, and that may be the case, so. At least if you have Gene send a note on your behalf to contact you if you're not able to, to be there, that may be important to you.
Okay, and we're willing to do whatever we need to to help the townships, I mean, if they need to come to a meeting or whatever, we are happy to do that. It's just, I think, would really help us a lot if we had this.
Well, you probably have a note just emailed right to the township officers, don't you?
I don't, but I.
I do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, many.
See?
Your staff.
Yeah, see, that's, that's why we're getting them right.
Yeah, talk to your staff.
Well, they, you know, I, I, this, I think this is good, I, you know, former township supervisor, there was times even where township officers can be confused on, on what is, might be a township road versus a private road, I'm sure you run across that. Uh, I've had a, I just had a, a county resident call me here not too long ago that went dealing with a road that's south of Glendon, I think, and they were, and it goes to their house, and they, they were under the assumption it was a, you know, a township road, and then township is saying, no, it's not, and so we got that whole, you know, just kind of, it's nice to clear all that up.
It comes up often.
Yes, yeah, so it's.
We'd like to hammer it out, so then we could say, no, it's not, or yes, it is.
I think it's a great project, and I'm going to motion move ahead with that.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, signature by the same aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. There you go, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Brian. He's just been waiting for this.
I've been anticipating this moment, so, uh, well, let me say, you know, I, I wouldn't come here and, and I think just, uh, like Sheriff Hinton said, I know the plight and everything that's been going on. I, I will say this, from a, from a personal standpoint, an elected standpoint, the work that all of you have done as a board, I know is greatly appreciated by all the employees to get wages and benefits right-sided, so I appreciate everything you've done and the heavy lifting to get that right-sided, it's, it's right-sized, it's been very good, very much appreciated. And I know my employees have talked a lot about it and very much appreciate it, so just want to say that on the record. So, I would tell you, I debated a lot of whether to even bring this now, but I do want to at least explain where our plight is within our office, give you some thoughts to think about what will happen here in the future. You know, when I look at my size of caseload, so, we have eleven attorneys currently, my size of caseload, when you look at Ottertail and Becker County combined, we're still larger caseload and trial caseload than both of those combined. So, if you look at their attorneys, Ottertail has nine, Becker County has five, so that's fourteen. We're probably closer to needing about fifteen, and we're at eleven, so that's where we're, we're currently at. With the, with the changeover, when we, when we lost the contract piece with Morehead, I think a lot of people thought, well, that's a big caseload piece that went away, but that was the whole thing of trying to get Morehead to help continue to contribute, because we weren't getting it right-sized. The county was contributing, the city was not staying up with it. By shedding that, that's fine, but we still, we're still increasing our caseload, we're still growing as we go. Uh, and that's a good thing in that the county and the whole area continues to grow, we're obviously a very vibrant community, but as the jail gets bigger, sheriff's department gets bigger, Morehead Police Department gets bigger, social services gets bigger, we, we work with all those departments, including then all the rest of the departments, and trying to stay up with, with advising, you know, all the other leadership and everything else, so. So, we're definitely thin right now, as is, and I think that'll be something you'll see in the, in the future when we look to add additional attorneys, additional. see in the, in the future when we look to add additional attorneys, additional legal assistants, to try to get ourselves right-sized, because for now, we're definitely struggling with the volume that we still continue to have. So, I have one assistant county attorney who's leaving as of Friday, she took a position that opened up with the city of Morehead, with one of their attorneys, one of my former attorneys, go into the U.S. Attorney's Office, so that's great for him, he's an outstanding attorney, he's gonna do great work in the community, but we're gonna keep seeing that probably happen, just based on the salary. Again, everything we're doing here is outstanding to get things right-sized, but the city's wages are definitely larger than ours, and they're gonna remain that way probably for quite a while. So, we're gonna lose an attorney, and she's gonna leave as of Friday. Leaving that vacancy open, I have another attorney, he will leave on the 12th, for maternity leave for two months, with his wife expected to have a baby. Right when he returns, I'll have another attorney go on four months of maternity leave then. So, we're gonna be down an attorney, just through maternity, maternity leave, over the next six to seven months. Losing that other attorney is definitely unfortunate in its timing, because I do support everything that the commission's doing here, I would almost not even come here and ask, other than I think we're just, we're right in that 11th hour, but we're also at that point where if I don't fill for two months, I'm gonna run into just more headaches and more backlog and everything else. And so, so I will just tell you, my first request to the board would be to fill that and have an authorization to fill, we would advertise right away, and look to hopefully fill by the end of November. So, so that's my, my first request. My alternative I would give to the board is that if the board is not willing to, to fill that or make that motion, that you would do it now to allow me to advertise by somewhere around December 1st, so that I'm advertising for a couple of weeks, or somewhere around, whatever it be, end of November, beginning of December, advertise right away for a couple of weeks, then work to get that person, and then allow them to give a two weeks' notice or so, so it is right that they're basically hired right away by January 1st, so. And then, wouldn't plan to come back here to ask to fill that again, so however the board ultimately does it, you know, and authorizes, that's just the other alternative I'd give, but we're gonna, we're gonna be pretty tight here for a time period.
Well, you know, I guess I like your option, too, there, just because, you know, you're, you're gonna advertise, that's gonna take some time, you know, by the time you get through the process, I mean, we're literally looking at a matter of weeks before, the difference would be a matter of maybe a few weeks before you'd actually have somebody anyway. And if you did find somebody through your process, can, you know, we've talked about this variable hour thing, for, could you bring them on board, you know, use them for some variable hours to kind of get them ready, and then would be, come on as a full-time employee after, you know, January 1st?
And maybe that'd be, and, 'cause we talked about that, too, I mean, one of the, one of the problems is we're just at such a, that weird timeline, that we're having a hard time figuring out what's gonna happen as of December 12th, we'll be down two attorneys, so we'll be at nine, minus what we really even need to be at, we're gonna be really struggling for a few weeks and trying to get that new person up. Maybe that is a possibility, even if we advertise now and said to them, can they come on on a variable hour for a few weeks and try to convince them, otherwise, 'cause one of the problems we run into is, again, let's say if an attorney, many times a professional, they want to give, you know, more than two weeks, so they have to give their employer four weeks' notice. We don't, we don't know that till we, till we both advertise and, and look to hire that person. So, those are, we're right in that strange window, that I know I need to come here and get some type authorization to make sure we can fill right away, and I can just let you know, we're gonna definitely be asking for more in the future, just based on how we're...
Great. Refresh my memory, was there, when you were deployed, did we hire an attorney to do some variable hour type work?
We had a contract attorney, Heidi Davies came in.
Is, is that something that we could look into doing?
Potentially, I mean, I think that's something that could happen, I think the difficulty usually is trying to find that right person, if you, you have to find somebody that's done some of that work before, that can come in right away and do it, which there just aren't that many, or you're really trying to find a new person that's looking for...
Right, and I just, I don't know the circumstances on that, if that's an option, but because she'd done it before, if that could do...
She actually took a clerk job with one of the judges, so she's, she's not available to take her one in there. But, that's a possibility of something that we could even look to do, I thought about that, we've talked about it. It is hard to find those right people that are willing to do that, they're usually semi-retired and/or have some knowledge.
My other question is, it seems to me that we had opened those positions when you were deployed, and it seemed to be a significant amount of time that they stood open, is that something that you're worried about?
A verbal...
I mean, when we, no, the, the regular position, the full-time position, it seems like we would keep, advertise it, and it seemed to be a while before we could fill it, so my question is, if we were, were to advertise it in the next two or three weeks, is there, what, what's the possibility of not, that not even being filled until the end of the year?
I would say that I think the, the way that we've fixed our wage and salary grid, we're gonna be definitely much more competitive.
Okay.
I think as, as, you know, the economy being good, a lot of times when, if the wage is less and economy good, I know not saying anything you wouldn't already know, but I think we weren't as competitive. I think we're very competitive now, and I would expect we would see more people apply for the job.
I think we should, you know, authorize the process to begin, and then use variable hours or whatever you can do to make it work until, you know, you, you know, tell them they'll be a full-time employee effective January 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, or whatever the...
First.
We can live to the finish line.
Right.
Well, I, I like that, and I thank you, Brian, for, you know, the understanding of that, I, I think, you know, I'm certainly in favor of authorizing this position for you, to know that you, you can have it secured and ready to go January 1, and if you can accomplish something to get that prior to that, you know, that, that works under a variable hour, I am all for that as well. You know, so, as a matter of fact, I would, I would make that a motion.
And I would just tell you, in order before you vote or talk, I think we can, within our hiring side of things, at least talk to them about that, what's happening, where the benefit package would be, so they understand what's, what's gonna happen by January 1, and make sure that they understand that that's a piece of what they're talking about, but at least either get a wage to them, or they can stay at their job a little bit longer if possible, and give them a longer notice, and I think that would probably be that work.
I appreciate that.
We have a motion that...
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thanks, Brian. Okay, Neffs, I'm just anxious to get up here. Request to fill two vacancies for public health nurses, so, morning, ladies.
Morning, commissioners. So, as you see from the information packet, we do have two openings, one nurse left during the probation period, and the other nurse was here for a couple of years and has moved on. So, one is in our family home visiting program, and I did a little explanation about that program, and the other one is in our adult health area. So, currently, just, just so you know, the nurses in both areas with these vacancies will be carrying a double load, so it gets to be kind of a challenge, and they get pretty, you know, it's, it's difficult when you're, you're already at a high level, especially in our adult health area, they're already topping the, the recommended caseload, so now they're gonna be picking up a load, an additional load, so it's, it's pretty challenging, and they're pretty stressed about that. But we also understand, as Brian talked about, we do understand the decisions that were made, and we all appreciate that, we appreciate the, the work that this board has done with the salaries and the market study, and particularly hopeful that we'll have a little bit easier recruitment for nurses, we don't know that yet, but we were hopeful that at least some changes that were made will, will get a little bit larger pool. So, our request will be, if you would allow us to advertise and interview, we're willing, even though we have some grant funding for some training for our family home visiting nurses, because it's an evidence-based program, there's very specific trainings, I believe we have like four, we have some grant funding for that, we can ask for a budget revision. I think with the four trainings, we're looking at maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars that the grant would cover, so that would be money that wouldn't come from the county dollars, which is really helpful, but we can request some board, or we can request some budget revisions and hope that maybe we could still get that in the next year. We don't know that for sure, we don't know when the trainings will be for 2020. So, our request will be, if you would allow us to open these positions, still may take a little bit to recruit nurses, and then we're willing to just put in the ad that we could start January 1st or the 2nd, if that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good plan, so. One of the board's wishes or questions for these ladies?
And, and both of these are ones that you currently have, too?
Correct, yeah, yeah, they're not new positions, correct, they're positions that we're filling from vacancies, that just occurred.
And once again, I, I think it's the same thing that we just did with our county attorney's office, you know, I, we had those positions for a reason before, and I, you know, and I think it's appropriate, and, you know, as long as we can maybe work around, you know, again, the new hires being January 1, I think that's really important to our board and part of the reconciliation that we did in this whole package. Kathy, I know you were involved with it through the insurance committee, so you know what we went through there, but, you know, so I would, I would support and move the request to have these employees ready, nurses ready for the first of the year.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. So, Steve, after today, I think you can see where we're at as a board in terms of requests for positions.
Yes.
If you want to make sure everybody does understand that, that it's highly unlikely that we'll, you know, support anybody being put on board with the county until, you know, whatever that magic date is in January, so...
Mr. Chair, we've talked about that, and I'll reinforce that management on Thursday.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks. Okay, request approval of foster care transportation agreements with Barnesville and Moorehead Schools. Rhonda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Don't have staff request today, which is unusual. Okay, now, I'm not sure, did this go out in the packets?
No.
Okay, so, what I have today is, it's a 10-page agreement, I'm looking for the board's support on, that will be with Barnesville School District, and it'll be the exact same agreement with the Morehead School District, and as I work with the other school districts, it would be the exact same agreement. The agreement is based on federal law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, and the Fostering Connections to Success and Increasing Adoptions Act. And the bottom line, what this requires is, as a county agency and having the authority to place kids in foster care, if we place a child out of their home-school district, so if a child is living in Morehead and we have to place the child in Holly, or maybe in Fergus Falls, it requires a process by which the county evaluates what's in the best interest of the child in terms of having the child transported back to their home-school district. So, it's a little bit easier when you're placing within the county, if a child that's in the Morehead School District goes to Holly, it could be that maybe it's gonna be a short-term placement, so we're gonna work on transporting the child into Morehead every day. So, it's a little bit different if we have a child that's gotta be placed in the cities, maybe with a grandparent, then the decision is it's, it's not even a workable plan, but the, the laws require us and the court to look at that, and the school districts, and for us to work together for that process.
Do we transport kids from Fergus, do we?
No, we don't have any in those situations right now, if it's been a very short term.
Wow.
I can't think of a case right now, but we, we're required to look at that, if it's a very short-term situation. Sometimes what happens is, for example, we've had kids placed in Barnesville from the Morehead School District, and the foster parents travel in, and so they've maintained, they've brought the children in for school, and so we've been able to maintain some in that way. So, this isn't really new, this is a practice that we, we always consider when we need to place kids in foster care. I mean, obviously, we look at relatives, but their home-school district proximity to parents are all things that we have to consider. What this agreement allows us to do is, if we have a child that's low-income, that meets 4E standards, and there's a transportation cost, we can claim reimbursement on that cost, and the school district and the county will work together on those transportation arrangements. Some of the arrangements will fall within the school districts already purview, if it's on a bus route, or if they qualify for other special transportation, but otherwise, if we have to be creative on how to get that child back into their home-school district, if that's in their best interest, then we work together on arranging that, paying for it, seeking reimbursement, and sharing in that cost. So, that's what these agreements allow for. Again, it's not really new in practice, it's, claiming reimbursement is new, both for the school district and for the county, so that's a good thing, but the other requirements of working together, this agreement formalizes our process a little bit, we have to have an identified point of contact when a child moves into a different school district, we have to go through a best-interest process, we have to document that, so it kind of outlines a little bit more formalized process for us. The bottom line is, this is following federal law. This agreement was reviewed by Mr. Mountain's office, Anthony Weigel had reviewed it, he did have some suggestions which were incorporated into the agreement and approved by the school districts as well, both Morehead and Barnesville, so...
Okay, questions for Rhonda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Harry Nunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Yes, and I will leave these two originals for signatures.
The sheriff thought about having them. Yeah, I know. I was here last Tuesday. Forgot.
Oh, yeah, that's right there.
Sorry, my life.
Okay, let's see, we are at committee reports. Jenny?
Well, since we didn't have a meeting last week, even though I showed up, guys.
You are dedicated.
Yep, two weeks ago, Commissioner Gross and I and Steve met with the extension to discuss space needs, not only the county's future space needs, but the regional extension offices' future space needs. My hope is that we can find a working relationship there and not have to move them off campus, I feel like it's really important to continue to have their presence on campus. We also had a county-owned property meeting last two weeks ago, a really great meeting, so many of the faces have changed on that board, so it was important to all come together and get up to speed on some things. Commissioner Gross was also present, and I guess we relayed the message that this board is of the thought that if there's anything that we can, any lands that we can get in the public's hands, we'd prefer to have that, and liquidate whatever we have. We discussed the future landfill site, two years ago, I think we talked about possibly selling the western part of that parcel, and so Kirk Rosenberg said that his department parcel. And so Kirk Rosenberg said that his department would be willing to cover the survey costs because it was designated as future landfill. So if sold, income would go to the solid waste. But that, it will be up for discussion at your board, so you guys can discuss that further. But.
How many acres is that?
Well.
That future landfill site is four hundred and eighty-three acres, but we talked about that western half.
It's about, it's about half, Mr. Chair.
So a little over two hundred acres, I believe. And so the survey costs came in at about six thousand dollars, the estimate. So we'll talk about that further. We also talked about hayland bidding in the future. And there's also another parcel of property in Elkhorn Township that we've had for a while. There may be some aggregate potential in the northwest corner. And so that's also a half of a quarter section. We talked about possibly offering up for sale after the current lease expires in a year, I believe. So good information there, but more to come.
Is that adjacent to the bicentennial prairie?
It is close. It's, I don't believe it's adjacent. I can get you on the map if you'd like. I had lakes and prairies meeting, a good update on the housing piece. I appreciated that presentation because we had had discussion at this board about what lakes and prairies and the HRE does together. And so I was curious about the percentage of individuals that they're helping, where they're at six months and twelve months after. And so ninety-eight percent of the people that were placed were still housed at twelve months. So I think that's important to note. And, sorry, I wrote it in the wrong spot. I think that's it for that one. I had the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting, good program updates. We will be having a meeting with Rhonda and Tina from Lakeland to discuss the Children's Day Treatment issues. As I've reported before, that, that budget item is continuously in the red, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in the red for Lakeland this year. And part of the issue is how it's being billed. We've billed in the past and Lakeland took that over, over the last year. And so we want to have some discussion on that because that's the school districts of Holly and Barnesville and Morehead. That's quite important for us. We also approved a safety net grant, which will help go towards the cost of fifty-seven uninsured youth that are currently receiving mental health services there. Did you want to talk on the county-owned property piece? Is that why you're?
I can just answer any questions.
Oh, okay. Did anyone have questions on the county-owned agenda?
I, my only comment was I, I understand on the Riverton property that, you know, I think we have to have the discussion. Ultimately, it's this board who's going to decide where the funds go, you know?
Right, and that's.
Yeah. So, but I, I know SWAC will talk about it, you know, and I, I gotta see what was originally invested by SWAC.
Right.
And what might we get in return.
Right.
We need, we need to talk about it.
But I, we have a pretty good, you know, it might be helpful if you were to just forward the lands committee meeting notes to Steve so he can forward to the rest of the board, just so they can have an update as to.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of the stuff were limited because of bonding dollars that it was purchased with. I should note that there are some parcels in the Oakport area that we own that it might make more sense for either the city of Morehead or the watershed because it would be continuous to buy out properties that they've had in the past. We can't sell them, but it may make more sense in terms of maintenance for our maintenance crew to not have to run all the way up there to just mull one parcel. So more to come on that piece. But I also attended the Buffalo Red Watershed meeting. Update from the Red Board, it is a bonding year. There's twenty million dollars budgeted for projects. There are three hundred million dollars in requests. Well, the reason I went was become because Jim Geet, a resident, had showed up to our board during the aggregate expansion public hearing with some concerns on some water erosion on his property. The watershed talked about it and agreed to have a meeting with all parties. And that meeting happened last Friday. And so if you want to report on, on that piece, you can further. There's a logjam on the river in Cregness Township that the approval was made to pay for that. There are going to be several ditch cleanings happening because of some erosion. And then there was some discussion on ditch eleven, which I'd received a lot of complaints about during the spring flooding. It just doesn't seem to be draining. There's a significant amount of water that's just being held. And so there will be, the mile and a half closest to the river will be cleaned this year. But the culverts are significantly different in terms of size and square footage. And so they're going to look further at that and bring it to highway because it could qualify for historic funding and the state could be paid for that. So Kevin and Frank, you may hear more about that from our engineer. I attended the diversion authority land management meeting. We had updates on the acquisition processes that are going on. There are some access easements that they're working on, on getting for monitoring. We had an update from MetroCog on the discussion on recreational use of properties in the future and an update on what the policy is for acquisitions at auctions. And that had a fairly good discussion. I think we have enough substance to maybe work, work forward on policy. And then the Jim Keet follow-up, Frank will cover. And then yesterday I had the lakes and prairies meeting. We discussed some updates to our HR policy, just to clear up some wording. So that concludes my reports.
Kevin?
I wonder if you want to let Commissioner Gross go next. He's got to commit.
Sure. Oh, that's right. Go ahead, Frank. Sorry.
Okay, two, two weeks ago Tuesday, we had the highway tracking. We talked about roads in order doing some railroad crossing inspections on several roads. We had a concern up at Hittodoll, a resident that says that the road that was down back in nineteen ninety-something was built too low and is causing water freezing up there. Its pipes freeze. And I think Dave went up there again, this is last week, and checked that out some more. We're doing some on Highway eighteen, we're doing some drainage studies to check to see whether the water isn't drained quite properly. Then they're going to put in another culvert or reroute some drainage a little bit there to, to levy in some of that drainage up there in County Road eighteen. We're looking at the salt shed out there, the highway property, that's probably nothing to be done. We're looking at a possible cost of four hundred and seventy-five thousand to replace some of those sheds out there. So that's going to come up in a year or two. That has to be replaced. Construction update at Linden, I think they're going to be done for the year. I should say, I think they're going to be, I think they are done for the year, but there's around three blocks that didn't get finished from Ninth Street to Twelfth Street. And that's just going to have to be the way. It is drivable, but it's not, it's not paved. And the sidewalks will ultimately put in next year. And we've discussed the mailbox policies, about replacing mailboxes. If they're not placed properly, we're not going to replace them. I mean, it all depends how, why they were tipped over something like that, you know? Because they have a proper mailbox, we'll replace it. But if they don't have a properly mailbox and a stance, we do provide, we provide a stance.
Are we letting the public know that?
I don't know.
And what, I mean, what would our policy be on that? It just seems like if my mailbox that I've had for forever gets hit, I'm going to want to get it replaced. But how do I know if it's not properly placed?
Well, I guess it's on our policy, our Clay County snow removal policy and stuff.
Yeah, you know, I, I think the, there has to be a determination on, on liability too. That was talked about. So, but, you know, I think the county's position is if you, if you don't have a, a breakaway style, you're, you know, and you're in the right, you're basically in, in a violation.
Yeah.
You know, so, so it wouldn't be replaced. There's some discretion there if it's known to be the driver's fault. But, and is it the snow that did it or was it the blade that did it? There's two different things there.
And also Tuesday, which Jenny already reported on, met with the extension, they're looking at some additional space needs that we probably have to look at. It's, it's not an immediate thing, but as long as we're looking at space needs, that has definitely taken into consideration. Let's see, had the land management meeting, which Jenny's already talked about, but I don't know, did you guys get that map showing all the property that, that's already, that we have? That's all county-owned property that's in between parcels that we, we're not going to do, either turn it over to, to the city or do something with it that we should have, get these parcels off our records as county-owned property. And we're not getting any out of them.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, I did reach out to the city of Morehead on that issue and they've asked for some additional information that we're collecting for them. So.
Okay. I think those were up here, I think these in the green up here, they were bought out with deed dollars, I think, as opposed to FEMA dollars. So that's how we ended up with them.
Right. That's why they just set it down. Nothing happened with it. The District Four meeting, which we had Friday, let's see, October twenty-seventh, everybody, I guess, pretty much, oh, I guess you didn't attend that. You weren't able to make that there.
Correct.
I mean, they talked, it was a different format this time. They talked mostly, talked a lot about transportation needs and stuff like that. So it's a different format, but we did give reports from each county. I think it sounded like almost every county is going to have some increases due to their special assessments. Wednesday, October thirtieth, we had scheduled a school bus route thing with the highway department meeting, which I attended there. Since we didn't have any tenants from any townships or any schools.
Really?
No, no one showed up for that meeting, but we, it was scheduled for ten, ten o'clock on October thirtieth. We're just going to tell them about our policy, about snow removal, which roads are, are polluted, stuff like that, not what our routes are first, which routes we're taking first. And then the James Geit complaint that he had, I mean, he brought up several complaints, you know, beaver dams and all, water from the Black Hills coming through and some of that. Yeah. They pretty much, I mean, Bruce Albright was there and explained it pretty good that it's just a high water year. I mean, he's, he's got some water problems, that's true. We gotta, we understand that. But there's a lot of water problems this year. And Mr. Geit's not the only one with water problems this year. And it's just natural, you know, it's just what's happening. It's, it's not the fault of aggregate industry. It's not the fault of beaver dams. It's the fault of being a high water table. You know, and it's just, and that's pretty much a, tried to explain that to him. I hope he's, they went out there after, after the meeting, the guy from DNR went out there to check to see his land as far as beaver dams. There were none. So it's just a matter of natural erosion.
And I think he also had a complaint that the water was eroding because of how fast it was moving. And a technician went out there and cotton and the water was not moving. I mean, so.
I know, it's just, like I said, they're working with them, Mr. Geit. They'll hopefully satisfy him, but.
I do have a meeting that Commissioner Gross and I met on and I forgot to report on is a while back, we received a request from Becker County to sign an agreement giving their Wild Rice Watershed member back to them. They're in the process of possibly filing with Bowser to, to have that reallocated. And, and, you know, our position is that we've honored their request and who to appoint. And Commissioner Gross is quite active at Wild Rice and recruited the member that's on there. And so our position is, you know, we don't really see a need to do that right now if the population warrants it with the census next year. Bowser's more than, you know, we're more than willing to, to kind of follow that path. But at this point right now, we just don't see the need to sign an MOU.
And I guess that was my final meeting.
I apologize. Sorry.
Well, it was fine. I mean, we did, like I said, we did meet on that and last Tuesday, on October twenty-ninth, to discuss that. And pretty much that was the outcome, you know, we need some more information why they want to, want to change it. And those were my things. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay. Highway tracking on the twenty-second, I think Commissioner Gross gave a good review of that. I don't need to go into that any further. The same afternoon, we did meet regarding the, with a group from, subcommittee group with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And we met with Senator Deacon, Representative Lean. And this was in regards to SCORE funding. What's happened there is, is the Menkota came to SWAC and told us that there's going to be about a fifty percent increase in our costs for all of our recyclable goods that go into, into their business. And it's because the commodity prices have just gone in the tank and they need to recoup their costs. And so we went and we talked to them about the SCORE funding. For people who don't know about SCORE funding, the Clay County gets about a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars a year from the state of Minnesota. That money comes from a seventeen cents per ton solid waste management tax that the state of Minnesota put on all, all solid waste. So that seventeen cents per ton goes to the state of Minnesota. And in the past, the state of Minnesota, I think originally county's got about thirty, got the full amount of, at that time, they would collect thirty-four million. Several years ago, there was kind of a rate on that money. And so the amount that the counties got went, went down to seventeen million dollars. And, and that's where we sit today. The sad part about, as far as I'm concerned, is the solid waste management tax brings in close to eighty million dollars today. And we get the same seventeen million dollars back. And so we talked with them. And, and I know it's within our AMC policy too about getting more funding for SCORE. So we talked with Senator Deacon and Representative Lean. And later on, we talked with Senator Markort about it too. And, and they're going to see if we can get some of those dollars brought back into the environmental fund, which then would transfer the SCORE dollars back to the counties. Our goal would be to at least double what we've been getting. It's, if they're going to call the solid waste management tax, they should use it for solid waste. You know, so. And, and then that, that goes then to, you know, the better we can do that, the better we don't have to do these tipping fee increases and these service fee increases that we're talking about. So, so that's, that's, I think we had some really good conversations there and support from those folks in moving forward. On the twenty-third, we had the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting. And again, the, we talked about the SCORE funding there. I think that group is going to also sign a letter in support of our, we're trying to get all the counties to sign a letter in support of that SCORE funding being changed. There was good news. We did receive the final on the bond refinancing. And that facility is going to see an eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar savings on interest, which basically wipes out the last year of payments on that, but comes up in two thousand and thirty, I think it is. On Thursday, the twenty-fourth, we had our solid waste advisory committee meeting. And we, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about the cell expansion, got an update on that. I won't go any further into that. I did meet quite a bit with them as we talked about in this, the whole budget. There are some significant changes made. There were some significant changes made in that process. The District Four meeting that Commissioner Gross talked about, that was primarily talking about transportation, the needs, and how do you fund all those needs. And then on the 28th, we had a diversion chairs coordinating meeting. We'll get into the details of that, it's pretty routine. We just recover or recap all the things that are going on. That afternoon, we had the correctional facility in the LAC and the juvenile detention center updates. There was nothing significant to report at those meetings. I'm trying to cut this report short here. Then on the 20, or excuse me, the 30th, we had the diversion public outreach meeting. And we had some discussion regarding the, a land auction that was coming up, should we or should we not partake in it? That was kind of a big deal there, some new talking points that were going on since the, I think Commissioner Whelan will report on his trip to DC. That same afternoon, we had the land management committee meeting, and again, the primary topic was should we or should we not be partaking in land auctions? And I spoke in favor, I spoke that we should not be involved with land auctions at this time. I didn't think it was appropriate for, at this time, for our government entity to be competing with private people.
I should probably say that that was my point as well.
Yeah, yeah. Now, now there, you know, and that's partly on this particular auction because those properties that were involved are properties that we do need to have easements on in the future for the project, but we don't need the properties for the actual construction of the diversion itself or the levee. So we just, and on such short notice, we just felt we should stay out of it. And I think that that was the conclusion of the diversion authority to the following day. On the 31st, we had our Moorhead-Clay County joint powers authority meeting. Several things went up, but primarily, you know, we agreed on a purchase price of some property in Clay County that's, we authorized to go ahead with. That is part of the, in the area that we need to have the land. And we did some, so we have the easement issues that are going to be coming up, that are going to be needed by the Corps. And they're primarily in those parcels that are in the storage area. So there was letters that went out to all those property owners saying that we needed easements, temporary easements to get onto the land to conduct soil pourings and things like that. So those letters went out, and that we were asked, they were asked to have a response. And by the 14th, they're required by the Corps to finish the plans, and so they need to have those core samples, so. So those letters, I think, went out Friday, last Friday. On the 31st, that same, then that afternoon, we had our diversion authority meeting. And again, the, I think the heavy topic of the day was the land auction, and I've already said enough on that. And then yesterday, we did have another chairs coordinating meeting with the diversion. And, you know, there's some different things going on regarding discussions on the North Dakota side, legacy fund issues and things like that that are secondary potential financing options, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, on Thursday, October 30th, I attended the diversion finance committee, and we heard the very first historic report from the new executive director, Joel Paulson. And he also reported on his trip to DC. Attorney John Shockley gave a report about the EPA WIFTIA application. And the good news that the WIFTIA financing is only one basis point above the treasury bond rate, which translates into, what, $600 million in savings over the course of the construction? So that was very good news. And then the motion we approved, or they approved a motion to spend $100,000 for this WIFTIA application. And I understand that's the second round of this, and so that is very good news as well. We got a report from Eric Dodds that property acquisition is going well in the process, and that was it. That's my report.
Thank you.
Let's see, I had the various diversion meetings and the solid waste meeting where we met with our local legislators. I think Kevin explained those pretty well. I was in DC week before last on the trip. The trip was about the federal appropriations for the project, and we met with the various congressional delegations. We met with Senator Hoven and Senator Kramer, and we met with Senator Smith's office. We did get a chance to meet with Senator Klobuchar about it. Everything was very positive. I think our key meetings were with the Corps of Engineers. Our meeting there went extremely well, and of course, they're certainly on board and are helpful with the process. And the discussions were about, you know, their financing, their portion of the project. And then our big meeting was with the Office of Management and Budget, and Senator Hoven attended that with us. And we were all very happy with the results of that meeting. I think for all the times that we've had a delegation there to Washington to address some of these issues, that was probably the most difficult one with Office of Management and Budget. And they were very receptive now and very welcoming. And I think it's because a lot of the issues are being resolved with the project, a lot of the legal issues, and I think that's going to go very well in the future, and most of those things should be resolved soon, so. Yeah, let's see, I think that was, yeah, we had the joint powers between Moorehead and Clay County on the property issues that Kevin reported on. That was it for me. Steve?
Mr. Chair, I attended, last, two weeks ago, I attended the highway tracking that's been addressed, the meeting with Ben Anderson at the University of Extension that Commissioner Mojean-Gross have addressed, lands records meeting, and also the solid waste meeting that Commissioner Campbell has discussed. That Wednesday, I met with Kathy McKay, Troy Omenson, Rhonda Porter about the detox program and potential impacts of the North Star program that's going to be opening up in Fergus Falls and how that may impact their needs into the future. Also had department head evaluation that day. On the 24th, we met with the solid waste advisory, which has been addressed here. That afternoon, I met with Kirk, Dave Overbow and his staff about the new methane boiler that's going to be part of the landfill project, just so there was an understanding of maintenance and on-call of the needs of who would be responsible, and I think that went very well. We attended the District Four meeting on that Friday. Again, they, in addition to talking about the transportation, we identified District Four legislative priorities, which dealt with preserving the tax base in response to increased property tax appeals, continue to build out mental health and substance abuse treatments, and sustainable and comprehensive transportation package. So we'll find out in December where they all lie, but those, that was the District Four area. On Monday, participated in new employee orientation of four new employees coming on board. We also participated in the diversion chair authority meeting, our coordination meeting, which Commissioner Campbell has talked about. Also the owners meetings and the juvenile center meetings that we've addressed. On Tuesday, took the opportunity with the board to meet with a number of department heads on a series of different issues in their departments. Met with Representative Marquardt, and then also on the other day with Representative Lee and Senator Eakin. Also on the 31st, I met with the representatives from the city of Fargo, West Fargo and Moorhead in discussing coordination of winter weather closures. Again, reiterated with them that Clay County's position is that we don't close. But one of the things, I guess, that was of interest in the discussion where I wanted to participate is when the city of Fargo closes, so does the bus hub station, and it leaves our universities and our Minnesota employees, sometimes in the industrial park and mall area are the big usage, and can potentially leave them stuck and trying to find a way home. And so we had talked about some possibilities of, if there's a way that we could better limit the closing or communication, making sure that we get the information out to people as soon as we can. And so there'll probably be additional conversations about that. Also participated in the Minnesota County City JPA meeting, which has been addressed. Yesterday, I met with Darren, a series of personnel matters, and also participated in the diversion authority chair meeting. I just wanted to give a quick update, the judicial referee chambers on the first floor have been completed. Joe and his staff did a real nice job of getting these offices set up. They are, it's taken a little bit longer for them to get ready. They're actually conducting interviews for the referee next week and hope to be ready to go by the first of the year. And the last thing would be, just to remind it to our employees that our open enrollment ends on Friday, and so if we could get those into HR to speed up the process for them, that'd be great. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I did, I failed to mention, we had a diversion meeting last Friday morning. R.D. James, the Assistant Secretary of the Army, was there, who is in charge of all civil works projects in the country. And he was, he's very supportive of our project, which is important because he's the one who recommends what projects OMB should approve for funding, so very important. So it was, I think, a very good meeting with him, and he continued to express his support for our project, so that was it. Anything else? Or?